I'd like to call the Wall City Council meeting to order, the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-fourth meeting. Would you please read the roll? Here.
Huckman?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Stan Anderson? Husted?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Rock?
Here.
Mike Anderson?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Stan and say the, but your allegiance, Garrett, would you like to at least believe it?
I'm very interested. I'd gladly be with the steward of the United States of America. And the steward of the public which stands for my nation under the cloud indivisible, in the highest of all.
Colonel, is there any order of business for emergencies?
No, there is not.
Is there any attendance on Zoom?
No, please, here.
So with that being said, that brings us to the place report. Would you like to come to the podium, Deputy Anne? And perhaps even introduce yourself.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, good evening, everybody. I am Andrew Knighton. I am a deputy with the National Cancer Care's office. I've been employed for eight years now there. I did four years corrections and then I've been on patrol for the last four or five years now. So I kind of took up this opportunity to work out here with you guys for a little while until a couple of trainers get signed off.
Okay, well, thank you and welcome. Do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, so. I'm not sure how much you guys went over it, any of it. Well, this is obviously my first time being on here, so I guess kind of you guys as part, what would you like to hear or know about? Again, so what we had, all our deals have been up. Up to par, or when my supervisor advised, we did one hundred and nine extra patrol down for the last month that have been reported on it. Or the calls, we had three morgues that we pulled out of the city of Wall, the town of Wall here. That's crazy. On here. And then just quite a few traffic stops were done last month also.
And the traffic stops were for?
It looks like the majority of them were just speed enforcement and then also traffic stop sign enforcement. And then I guess on the other side of this too, that we have reported on here, we, or actually myself, I pulled a stolen vehicle out of the days in as of last month. So. I don't know, that's been pretty mellow out here.
Do you continue to check in on Prairie Village on a regular basis?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's one of our hot topics currently. Granted, since one of the war, most of the morgues came out of there, since we've had those dealings. It's actually been, not that, well, it's fairly quiet, so.
Well, thank you for doing that and handling that situation so well and professionally. Does anyone from the council have any other questions?
I saw a state trooper sent up by Glen Street and was pulling over some skaters as well too, so I think it's been a pretty hard day for speeding.
Yeah, yeah, and then we're working pretty close with the park rangers on the Badlands too, so they're helping us out there, but.
Thank you. A stolen car, was that from here or just found here?
Yeah, it was just found here. It originated out of Rapid City and it got dumped out here is where I located it.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, sir. And thank you for choosing to come and help in law.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate that. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
Seconded.
Mike seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone that needs to declare conflict of interest this evening?
Number fourteen, let's retract, um, we did find, we think we came to another solution, so we won't need to. Do the request that stepping within for.
Oh, okay.
As close, so.
Okay. So she won't be here to discuss about that. Okay. All right. Uh, moving on then, do I have the most, are the minutes were included in your packet? Does anyone have any corrections, revisions, or edits? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, also in your packet was the city of Wall, the fire department, and library claims. Did anyone have any questions on any of those for Carolyn? Okay, hearing or seeing none, would I have a motion to approve the city of Wall Fire Department and Library Claims?
So moved.
Rick's moved.
Seconded.
And Dan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, also in your packet was the golf course financials. And the budget report, the expense and the revenue. Did anyone have any questions on any of those this evening for Carolyn? Okay, hearing or seeing none, that brings us to item number twelve, and I'd like to welcome the ambulance director this evening, Justin.
Evening, City Council, Madam Mayor, thank you. Justin Perkins, Director for the Wall Ambulance Service. Monthly report for August, we had thirty-three calls for service. Of the thirty-three calls, we transported eighteen individuals to the hospital. And the other fifteen were either standbys or canceled. We did not transport anybody. Last evening, we approved our budget for next year. We also will be putting in a request to the city next week for financial assistance for that budget for next year. About the only other thing I want to pass along is that the Wall Ambulance Service is going to be working in conjunction with the Rapid City Fire Department on a grant. If we're successful with this grant, it will enable us to host an EMT class here in Wall. So hopefully that'll allow us to get some EMTs here locally, which will help out the service. More to come on that, probably won't know anything confirmed until December, January. Any questions?
And if that's awarded, it's a free class for people.
Yes, sir. Yes, if it is awarded, then the class would be hosted by the Rapid Fire Department via Zoom, so the individuals won't have to go to Rapid. Other than maybe a few times for hands-on training, but it will be free to build individuals here in Wall.
What is the age group? I, I mean, the, like I'm thinking, high school seniors.
So you have to be eighteen in order to enroll into the EMT course. That is about the only restriction.
All right. Well, that sounds very good.
Yes.
Okay, any, any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we also have an agenda request from John Destry. I'm saying that, would you like to come to the podium, John?
You said that correctly. Before I begin, Kenji, I'm not sure where his hall signs are now, but my stepfather was thirty-two and been in county with seventy maids.
Okay.
Um, John Destry, Madam Mayor, council members, speaks for itself, Fourth Avenue, West Fourth Avenue, this age, feet weight. People just fly down that road, both directions. And I walk my dogs and cats out there, and there are now children living on that road. Now I'd like to see something to call them, that speed, speed bumps, something. They're catching them on Duane Avenue, they're not catching them on Redford. So, that's all that happens.
Well, the great news is you would have sidewalks on both sides, which. Keeps, because you're not walking in the street, is that correct, when you walk your dogs and cats?
They'll have to cross, I'm sorry.
But you do have to cross.
You have to cross and they don't know what a crosswalk is either, so it's a dangerous street sometimes.
Okay.
Your trucks, the green trucks come down there fast, people from Minnesota do not know how to drive at all. Anybody from Minnesota? Yeah, I'm serious, I watch license plates, they are the worst, and. What was the other? Oh, people coming right out of the campground, there is no speed limit sign for them, and they hit the floor running. Or deck, unstable.
That's what I was gonna ask you, is do we have stop signs running along there, or not stop signs, um, speed limit signs?
They have a flashing speed limit sign?
Yeah.
Very true, pay attention to it, little ride on through.
But like you said, when they turn out of the campground. We look at, maybe put a sign up there and put some flags on her, on speed limit signs like we did on Glen, to try and attract more to look at that?
Because I want to start taking my water hose and spraying them.
I'd put a sign with the elevator for any train truck.
Give it a little matter to them. Jerry, my son worked for you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Thank you for sharing that with us.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving to. And you're saying that we do not need item number fourteen, that's a scratch, so then, Kendrick Jeffries.
Uh, Chair members of the council, my name is Kit Jeffries, I represent Puffy's Dispensary out of Rapid City. A long time coming. We've come back to this council a number of times over the last couple of years. I'm eager and excited to be here in front of you today. This is an opportunity to vote on a medical cannabis dispensary in the city of Wall. A couple of things about our application. The, the ordinance states the issue of provisional license, there's some requirements. Uh, one of the requirements is that the application be current correct, which we believe it is. Uh, the application has not made any false statements on, on the medical cannabis dispensary portion of it. All of our investors and operators have passed background checks. We have not been disqualified, or convicted of a disqualifying felony offense. And we also have not been denied by the city to operate a medical cannabis establishment within the preceding twenty-four months. Uh, the application, or the property is not overdue on the payment of city tax, or spying fees, or penalties assessed or against or opposed. Um, that property. And we have not operated a medical cannabis establishment in violation of any rule or code in any of the jurisdictions that we're in, including at the state level. Before you guys today, if you guys have the application on your tablets there. You'll see a big list of South Dakotans, a lot of them have ties back to the city of Wall. Uh, we're eager and willing and able to be good neighbors and like we have been through this entire process. Uh, the only thing I ask for you guys is for your favorable consideration on the whole of property. If you guys have any questions, I will be here to answer them.
So this is a new application, correct?
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, yes, it is a, a part of the same application, we had just tweaked the location on that. To be in conformance with last city council meeting with the rezone and plat of the whole of property, um, north of the interstate.
So that, the location is the only part that's different from the first application that you would have submitted?
Uh, the other thing would be that there would be six additional investors that came on through the license application process in Surges. Uh, we had an agreement with them, this has taken about two years. So we went through the city of Surges license application process, where we were awarded Beet County and Surges licenses. And in that, we had agreements with those investors that they would be equity owners of Puffy's dispensaries. And so by doing so, they had to go through all of the background checks and all their stuff, the same as the rest of our investors, so that would be the other thing that's changed.
Did some of your investors back up? No, is it the same list?
It'd be the same list plus a, just a handful more. But I do have that cusp of greatness here in Wall, I don't know why they want to back out.
And then your next step would be, uh, like your drawings and kind of your plan as you, as you're building and all of that, correct?
I believe so, Carolyn, just, uh, to be clear, that's their next step, correct, submitting a building permit?
Right.
Um, and we have a really great engineering team in Reno James Engineering out of We Ridge, Colorado. Uh, they've designed, facilitated about five hundred dispensaries all across the country, including all of ours that we've done so far. That just keeps it safe, make sure that it's compliant with rules and regulations, so that there's a vestibule to prevent any kids or unauthorized individuals from entering the dispensary or seeing any medical cannabis products that they wouldn't normally be privy to. Um, that, we, we go to great lengths to make sure that we stay compliant with rules and regulation.
Will there be any use allowed on the premises?
Uh, Madam Chair, no, there will not be. Uh, we have a very strict standard operating procedures to prevent that. Um, including employees, if, uh, an employee which may very well be a medical cannabis cardholder. Uh, unfortunately, through our standard operating procedures and state laws, smoking in public or consuming in public is illegal. I believe that's, uh, uh, an ordinance statewide and in Wall as well, if I'm, if I'm mistaken.
Can they be using the medical marijuana while they're working for you, be on it?
Uh, Madam Chair, no, sir. I'm sorry, I'm a former of the legislature, so I just addressed the chair first.
I noticed.
With your first application, did you go to planning zoning at all for that, or did you just come to the city council?
Madam Chair, I don't believe we did. Uh, I believe we just came directly to the city council after turning the application into, uh, Carolyn.
But the building permit? How will that be handled? Will that go to planning and zoning, or will that come directly to the city council?
If it's within, meets all the regu- regulations, the setbacks and everything, the new zoning ordinance? It will be allowed, uh, by Garrett and I reviewing it, and then, um, coming to the council to let them know that it's been submitted. But if they're asked, gonna ask for any variance on it, then I need to go to planning, that's all.
Exactly.
And, uh, Madam Chair, for point of clarification, we will be asking for a variance, I believe, with the updated zoning package on that property, if I'm not mistaken. And so it would more than likely go to planning and zoning first, um, for their blessing on the variance before it comes to city council.
That within we are?
And then, just for a point of clarification, we're required by state law to have a medical marijuana dispensary in Wall, in the city of Wall, if I'm correct. Uh, limited to one other than that.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, the state government does require municipalities and counties to have at least one dispensary. The state government doesn't require that you have a cultivation, manufacturing, or testing. What they did do during the initiated pro, or initiated measure twenty-six that was passed and by voters in November of twenty twenty. Uh, was drafted by an advocate who thought about rural access. The Wall dispensary would facilitate everything between here and Fort Pier, as there is no other medical cannabis dispensary between Fort Pier and Rapid City. Uh, so we would be not only taking care of Wall municipality, but we'd be taking care of Kadoka and Phillip, among other places, uh, rural areas. But that is in no way an endorsement from the city council. You are correct, um, that is by state law that the, um, uh, local governments do have to permit one, but in no way does a yes vote, um, uh, and mean that that's an endorsement of cannabis by any stretch. If that's what you're looking for.
Yes. And like Phillip and Kadoka probably don't have one particular ways to probably put in for the license, correct?
Yeah.
Or angry from here to Fort Pier.
Yep.
Where will your parking be at, at that facility?
Um, we would have to, oh, sorry, Madam Chair, we'd have to build a parking lot, uh, Egress and Ingress, um, uh, working with, more than likely, the Department of Transportation. There is a gravel road, um, that goes right along that side, um, there right now on the property line. Uh, we don't know if that would be sufficient enough, um, uh, for planning and zoning and the Department of Transportation. Those are all conversations, uh, we're willing to work with the planning and zoning to try and help ease any of those issues. If DOT requires us to, um, pave that and do all that, we're more than happy to. The one thing that we are for sure gonna be required to do is have a handicap accessible zone, so, and, and meet all ADA requirements uh, going into the building, so that patients are able to get in and out safely.
Any other questions? Then do I have a motion to approve this application that's in front of us?
So moved.
Zach is moved.
Seconded.
Mike seconded. Any other questions or concerns?
What can you have, what, uh? Kind of protection are you gonna take for the neighbors across the street?
Madam Chair, that's a great question. Um, we work with a company called Sauvinox Technologies. Um, uh, there's a representative here in, or well, in Rapid City, uh, and what they do is specifically work on odor mitigation. So cannabis stinks, that's why the city of Wall created a, a prohibition on smoking in public. What Sauvinox Technology does is they use UV radiation through the air ducting and the, and the ventilation systems uh, to prevent any odor emitted from the building. Um, as far as signage and things like that, uh, my understanding would be that signage would have to be permitted through the planning and zoning department. We're not gonna have anything that's really big or flashy. Um, we're gonna use, uh, search engine optimization and SEO through, uh, digital and mobile, um, uh, and website communications to reach patients, as well as text messaging services through the patients that we have east of Rapid City. Let them know that this is available for them as, as a new option. As far as anything else I might be able to answer, that's just what I can think about coming ahead.
One more then.
Yep.
Why do you have to have odor if they're not using any product? Is the product itself stained?
Madam Chair, absolutely, yes it does, yeah. Yeah. It's a very stinky product.
Old school.
If you've ever hit a skunk on the side of the road or, or driven over a skunk, even though you're not directly in contact with it, you can still smell it through your vehicle. Cannabis is the same way. If you have raw marijuana in your backpack, everyone in this room would know, right? So, um, to be mindful of the neighbors, not everybody likes to smell cigarette smoke or, or marijuana smoke or marijuana odor. Uh, we just go to those great lengths to be neigh, good neighbors.
Is that the protection you were referring to though?
Well, just that in the traffic, I'm like traffic control, that's why I asked about the parking.
Madam Chair, yeah, for like the demographic in Pennington County, um, out, uh, Wall, Kadoka, Phillip, there is not a lot of patients out this way. Um, I would expect that we may be at most see five to ten people a day in a medical cannabis market. With that spread out over an eight-hour period or however long, uh, we would be open. Um, that would, uh, not really drastically increase the traffic on that road there. I have one more thing I was gonna say, I just couldn't remember off the top of my head. Um, oh, uh, security cameras and, and things like that. The one thing that will provide for that area is three hundred and sixty-degree coverage of security cameras, um, which helps law enforcement quite a bit to help mitigate any crime or speeding in that area. Um, if we had a, uh, someone had questions about a white pickup truck that's been speeding down that road. Um, at all of our locations, we have four K, uh, high-definition cameras that can zoom in on license plates. Even better yet, if it was in the corner of here, it could zoom all the way down into Councilman Husted's paper and see all the notes he's writing down. Uh, you could see if an ant was missing a leg. It's very high-tech security, um, and so we, we just hope to work with everybody on that. And, uh, when we get through the planning and zoning phase, I'm excited to show you guys all that stuff too.
So it's been moved and seconded. Seeing and hearing no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, at this point, it is open for public, uh, comments. And, uh, anyone that, any member of the public that would like to discuss or express concerns to the council with any issue that isn't on or not on the agenda, action will not be taken on that issue uh, until it can be added to the next meeting agenda. Each person would have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone that would like to, uh, take advantage of the public comments this evening? Okay, that brings us to item seventeen, which is to rezone, uh, the rezone recommendation from Planning Commission on Resolution twenty-four eight. And Dan, would you like to, uh, talk to us about that resolution?
Um, this is, uh, rezoning. What was referred to as Morningside property where the shooting range is. Um, it was, it's been city property, but it was outside the city limits. And then us also includes the Hancock property, which was in the county, but they requested to be annexed. So this will bring all that property into the city limits and it was the recommendation of planning and zoning that the city council approved it. Rick, Linda, anything else you have?
The shooting range you're referring to?
The trap.
Okay.
Trap shooting.
Is, Dan, just, is the Hancock property in that property?
No, no.
Is, does this cover both of them?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. And, and, and the Morningside property, and we don't know why we call it that, but we have eighty acres. Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation from planning and zoning for Resolution twenty-four dash eight?
So moved.
Okay, Rick has moved, Jerry seconded. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. We have some, uh, a building permit then in front of us, and this would come to us from Tanner Hattie-Bach. And this is for a residential, uh, building permit for his house. Uh, the diagrams are included with this permit. And we, uh, since we have rezone that, then this building permit is, uh, proper. And it, we do need to address it. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Zach moves.
Seconded.
And Dan seconded. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next building permit is for twenty-four by forty-eight, um, addition to an existing shop at Forty Stone Drive for Lance Sundell. He's just building on to the, the shop that's already there.
Check that out, Gary.
Yep, all good, good.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dan's moved.
Seconded.
And Zach seconded. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, then that brings us to a conditional use permit from Kendall Nelson for an Airbnb at Twelve Stone Drive. Um Kendall, I see you're here. Did you want to address this at all or?
Uh yeah, it's just for the basement of the home, still the owner occupied, so it's a separate entrance. And I know we have an issue with a lot of Airbnbs taking out residential homes, but also we live in it.
Okay.
Kendall, does it have, it's in the basement, are there windows that you can safely get out of the meat code?
Yep, and I got my department of health license, and she did email me the actual license today for the application or the I don't know, the survey thing she did when she came to the house, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh do you need any signatures from neighbors?
I submitted the application.
I felt there needed to be a third signature, but because it's within a hundred feet of the property line. And the person on the other side of Alan Schultz is so close to that hundred feet.
It is more than a hundred feet and I think more than rules and so I do have I do have a map from Rapid Map showing you know all the areas and you can pull it up yourself.
The thing is, is those aren't the true property lines, though.
I guess if you want to get a
Recommendation or?
I did go knock on their door, they didn't answer to get a signature. But there are also tenants and Danny Anderson was in property. But and I do have copies of the signatures. This is Alan Phillips right next to me and Chuck Secora lives right across the street. The other person that she's referring to is the person on the other side of Alan Schultz. So it'd be my neighbor's neighbor. Over a hundred feet. Hundred feet is the rule.
Like I said, on Rapid Map, though, those lines are not true property lines, so that's why I felt it was so close it really hurt with that.
And I did try, I knocked on their door and no one answered, so.
So who who would sign off on that? The property owner or the?
Person.
The leasur, okay.
Did you say the person that leases it or the?
Lives there.
I think it would be the property owner. It would affect not the leasers, I guess, but renting out my basement, hundred and forty.
Stephanie, what was that?
Our ordinance doesn't refer to the property owner.
They all know owner.
Yeah. And I mean, the the feet are set. It could be a hundred feet, an inch, but our ordinance refers to a a set number of feet. We can either go by the ordinance or change it.
Okay, does anyone, oh, Mike, you're about to pose a question. I can see it.
I'm seeing if I can answer it on my own.
Okay.
And I never signed anything for the people that are renting that space out that I need signatures from, I guess.
From which one?
From the people on the other side of the that one, they also need my permission, I guess, to do the same thing, but.
No, because they're a full-time renter. This is not, the Airbnb is random people coming.
Or term rental or Airbnb is an overhanded.
Do you have a question myself?
Well, I just wondered then if we would have to have Stan sign off. I I mean, is that, if that's what the ordinance says, correct?
Well, you know, we we could we could grant it and say we need for it to go into effect, we need a proper measurement or Stan to sign off on it or both.
Correct.
So am I supposed to measure?
I can go wheel it off.
Okay.
I I would make that motion then to approve it. Um and with the condition that if it's, if it's less than a hundred feet, then you get Stan's signature.
So. Okay, so.
So is that, or if it's under the hundred, she doesn't need the signature and it's granted if it is, then Stan needs to sign.
Okay, well, well, good. I I agree, that's good.
So it's been moved and seconded with the condition that it's, it is measured and if it is, does not meet the hundred-foot distance, then the property owner's standing interest would need to uh sign on, okay?
And I did try to reach the people living at the house and knock on their door. No one answered, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay.
And then if it is past the one hundred feet, just keep that mind going, find Stan and talk to him and ask the people out there.
Yeah. If it's less than.
Less than, yeah.
Is that the general?
Okay, any other questions, thoughts? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We now are at um the uh intent to enter into a lease of real property, Resolution twenty-four dash seven.
And so basically, anytime you don't put something out for bid with somebody to and the public would have, and if your intentions are to just rent or lease or whatever the case might be to a single person for over a hundred and twenty days, you would have to publish that your plan for that is and a publication has been made. And then you have to pass a resolution of intent that that's your intentions.
So this is coming to us through the um Airport Committee, Stan and Rick. And it's to uh rework the ground around the runway. And uh so it will give um get that ground all in better shape because right now you've been driving across it about, well, Garrett can speak to it better than I.
Yeah, I don't know what used to be out there, but it's rough, you know, a lot of can tell when they go hay and where the dries into the ground and so we just talked about maybe, you know, leveling it out so it's smoother, planting better grass or out or whatever.
And because there would be a lot of input costs into this, that's why the five-year agreement. Um because it'll take that long to actually get that ground back in shape, it takes, it's not a one-year situation. Okay, would I have a motion then to approve this resolution of intent twenty-four oh seven?
Make that motion.
Jerry has moved.
Second.
And Rick has seconded. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us then to the chamber report.
Katie. Hello, uh your community center report should be in your packets. Um you've got the Golden West Annual Meeting next weekend on Saturday. And the West River Electric Annual Meeting is coming up on October twelfth, so we always look forward to those two meetings. Then we're always, we're really happy that they continue to have them here in Wall. So um anybody have any questions on your community center report? Um for chamber, uh the twenty twenty-five budget was finished up and our request was submitted, so it was great getting that all taken care of. And uh coming up, we've got Homecoming Appreciation Supper on Friday, October eleventh, and we'll be serving from five o'clock to six thirty at the Wall City Park. It'll be before the Homecoming football game. And if the weather stinks, we will have an inside location. We're not quite sure if it'll be a powerhouse or we have a possibility of another one that would be a little bit better, but we haven't heard for sure. We've got the okay on the internet, so that's to be decided. And so and then the Wall Community Craft Show will be Saturday, November second, and we'll be from ten AM to three PM. And I do still have some tables available. Uh tables are really, really inexpensive at fifteen dollars a table and really love to have some new unique vendors. So if anybody, you guys know, um, you have any ideas of anybody that would be interested, please let me know. I'd love to reach out and invite them personally and see if they'd like to come. Uh and then our next board meeting is Friday, September twenty-seventh at seven AM. And then the next chamber luncheon is October eighth at noon at the community center. Somebody have any questions, Mike? All right, thank you.
Oh. Katie, who, when was the next chamber luncheon?
Uh October eighth, Tuesday, October eighth. We're not going to do this Wednesday stuff. At least not this month, but what I've gotten the our schedule last time, but yeah, they at noon.
And you provide lunch?
Yeah.
And it's delicious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the neighborhood or the Sunday?
Yes, the Sunday. Uh I think one o'clock.
Okay, that brings us to uh the Wall Economic Development Corporation Report. So welcome to you.
Hello. Um some of you have met, some of you have not, and I'm looking forward to meeting you. I'm Asha Morell and I'm your new um Economic Development Director. I'm very excited to be in this position. Um this has been my first week. And it has been, it has been an adventure in finding stuff. I spent the last several days going through all of the files, most of the files that are on the computer. We get up to date on where we're at, where we've been, what we're doing. Um I still could use a lot of gaps to be filled in, so you know, feel free to say, oh, anything to me, um so that I'm up to speed. Um in the process of doing that, I did come across that our land was not on the government's website. And um that apparently has to be renewed every six months, so Mary and I took care of that. That happened September fifth is when that fell off, but it's back up and on the land, on the website again. So we can get that out there to people. Um I've been watching for companies and that that might be interested in coming to us um so that we can bring them in here. Um I've touched base with a lot of people. Um I've got our meetings with our web designers set up so we can refresh that, make sure that's all up to date. Um some of our dates are from twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, so we're listed in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're almost around the corner from that one. Um um I touched base with Cheyenne about the industrial park land that she's selling for us and also the housing properties that are around here and that, just kind of get a feel of the rap on that. Um what else? Um uh touched base with Hannah from the government's EDP department. Um we're going to get set up a meeting and uh touch base and figure out what we can do for our lovely community of Wall. Um I've set up some classes and some networking events so that I can get out there, meet some people and um hopefully get some things moving for us. Um a lot of my time is spent researching companies that might want to come here um and into our industrial park. Um I did come across one, but they wanted a hundred-plus acres. You don't have that, that over there. So um that's not one that we can do, but hopefully something else will come up. Um we're going to meet with the high school and see if we can't get your board members for our board coming up, our annual meeting is coming up in November. We are not setting dates for that. We'll figure that out, let y'all know. Um let's see here, uh a little bit about me, I I did grow up in the area, grew up in Rapids. Um went to school in Sturgis, left when I was seventeen, kind of traveled around the States. Um I was um I've been in theater, I've done a lot of nonprofits, worked for theater. Um I then went into the medical field, came in acupuncture, so ran my business for ten years in Los Angeles. Got a whole lot of connections there, too. I've met a lot of interesting people. Um my husband and I then decided that Los Angeles wasn't for us, and we've been traveling around the States for the last three years trying to find our forever home, and he finally talked me into coming back home here to South Dakota. And um I'm really glad I did. My parents are here and I want to be close to them. I don't want to miss any more time with them. I've been away a long time, so. Um we chose to come out here because we wanted space. I've been living in big cities and I'm tired of cleaning my neighbors' windows for my so um so we found property out here. Mom was not happy about that, but I'm like, it's only an hour. So um so we settled there, many of you, Mike, you might have been, we had the food truck, the Jamaican food truck that's down at my Hanson's Inn. Um so we're going to kind of run that through the winter as well here and there, um and then work on various other jobs. So that's sort of me in a nutshell. Anybody have any questions?
Your husband's a real one?
He is.
I just wanted to know.
It's all. It is. He did the, um if you went to the Quinn, he did the brisket for the Quinn days the other day, so everybody seemed to read that.
Yeah, you're really good.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, so it is, it's good stuff, so if you have any catering events or anything, listen hard. Sorry, step off. Do multitask very well, so and I'm looking forward to hopefully next week um get out into the community and start meeting some of the business um members of our community and some of the community too, and see where we're at, what people are looking for, what I can do to help get our town moving and growing. That's all.
Well, thank you very much. We are really glad to have you.
I am glad to be here, so I hope I do well for you all. But just, you know, stop at any time if you have ideas or thoughts, shoot me uh an email like, hey, I thought of this, why don't you research it? I will, I'll look into it for you guys, okay?
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to the Finance Officer Report.
I shared the um concern form with you and there were some pictures. And I guess in the area that this is from, I just have concern if we start choosing properties that are next door, because that whole area out there doesn't all get mowed, you know, so I'm just um I guess if you want to address more further into it, we can address that in executive session, too, because we try not to mention names when they're concerned about their neighbors' things, but um I guess I just do need direction at some point whether to explain that this is not something we can control in that area or if I do send a letter out, so.
I mean, Garrett, have you had any complaints about anything on those properties?
No, but just kind of looking at those areas, I think I think if the one was cleaned up a little bit, the rest of that could get hated.
Are you talking about the one on the south side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then if, I mean, if somebody went to that other one and asked them, can we hate that? I mean, then it would be cut, and I don't know. It might be, because everything else, pretty, a lot of that is all hated all around there. So that's just kind of one thing I thought of. There is quite a bit of junk in that corner where, you know, you can see in that picture, it's not not mowed, so.
So what is the feeling of the council then? How should, Carolyn's asking, direction on how to proceed? Or do you need further discussion or?
I like what you're saying about cleaning up all their rooms and stuff around and see if they can hate it and just do that.
So are you thinking that that Garrett would address it with these landowners or?
Would be up to it. I could do it.
Is that satisfactory to everyone then?
Then I guess, I don't know, I made it. Probably won't get done. I mean, probably won't get cut this year.
Right.
It probably will have to stay, but as long as I've been here, it's never been mowed ever that I know of.
And then our Carolyn, is he able to tell the property owners that there was a complaint on it? I mean, obviously not who was, but if they really wanted to know, they could come and view the complaint, but that's why we require.
They would have to, yeah, write up the request form and stuff, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, so I mean, maybe once they. Are made aware that there, that somebody is, you know, you know, the one property owner, and then probably doesn't even know that could be an option.
That's right, and that that actually would be income. For, I mean, if he lets somebody hate, they would.
So yeah, I can, about how big is that lot?
I don't know, it's a pretty good sized lot.
Yeah.
Runs back there in all ways.
So yeah, I can talk to them.
Is that a consensus then of the council? Okay.
And then um. We are going to be applying for a tree grant. I've done this before and the trees have been utilized out of the golf course. Um, this time we are going to place them out in the park area. Between Dakota Mill and the park to kind of get some. What do I want to say?
Buffer zone.
Buffer, there you go. So just um, be working on that. That's due in a couple of weeks, so I'll have to be getting right on that. And then uh, just to let you know, I will be out of the office most of next week. I will be attending a school board function and trying to utilize some of my vacation that needs to be used between the year. So, but I will be reachable if you, I'll be checking emails and you always know what my cell number. Okay, that's all I have.
Any questions or? Okay, I hope you get that right. Okay, that brings us to public works then, Garrett.
Um, you guys know that we uh, cleaned out the ditch on, I call it the West Boulevard over. From M and M and I was contacted by the state that we need a permit to do that. Um, and so they requested that I, from what I've done, I need to match the slopes. Uh, fertilize seed and put erosion blanket down and that is all been done, so. Took kind, took a tiller in there, so leveled it out pretty good, so hopefully. Hopefully the grass grows, should.
Well, the good news, the water runs and drains, does not just accumulate like it was doing, so.
It's, it's still accumulating there on the east side.
Right, I mean, it's not gonna run a hundred percent dry. The reason I did that is to make it bigger. So it evaporate better, yeah, cuz before it was just maybe a ten foot by five foot area. And then now all the water can come out of the cold ones instead of sitting in there. But yeah, me going in there and putting that erosion blanket in and all that's gonna, it holds water. I mean, it's not gonna. But eventually, once the grass grows, you know, it should soak in there.
Just don't drag on after it rains.
Right, I wouldn't ride on it now. No, and I've been trying to, and with that too, I've been trying to keep it watered. And I have been going up and down Fourth Avenue and, and watering the new grass along there for. For landowners too, to try and keep that going good, so that looks, I mean, it looks.
Oh, it looks really good, pretty good, yes.
So. Yep, um, and I dropped it all on the old back waiting mower. I think the auction was the day after the council meeting. It was shortly after, so, but I'd have talked to Colton Tinas at the county and they do have one that's gonna go up. For auction or bid, you know, it'll be here, so. So I'll work with him getting that done.
Oh, well, that's good.
And that's. Something we might be able to. Talk with the commissioners or the highway superintendent, you know, that's property that can be transferred between two government entities. Doesn't have to go up for sale or anything.
Oh, really?
Sure. Yep.
Right, uh, could work in our paper, awesome.
We've done that, you know, like with fire trucks and stuff, so. You don't have to put it up for bid if you have another entity that's interested.
So Colin William, Colin William need to halt her up if, what's that?
Colin William need to halt her out, or you could just take her right over to the shop and right down the street.
So who can take the lead on that?
I can.
Okay.
Looking into, see if they'd be.
Yeah, no kidding. So maybe that was good that you missed that other deal.
Um, then transfer station update you there. Uh, there is. There is a roll off in front that people can throw stuff in, so like if they call me or Gary or whatever, they can put stuff in there and tell. They get the time set up or whatever. I think it's, I honestly think the best thing is to do is to. It's gonna be hard to say like Thursday is the day that I'm gonna be there from one to four thirty. And it worked good in the years past that, you know, people called me and like, gotta get rid of a couch instead of, okay, well, call. Call the number on if you can, leave a message. And Gary will set up, but I've never, never once heard back from anyone that Gary's not set something up, so. And I don't, I don't know what their plan is, but.
What they have for turnout for the.
Uh, it was kind of busy. I was only there for like twenty minutes, but.
One fifty two, I got it. But no, there was quite a bit. It was full. The roll off was full when I left and a couple. Traders came in, so, and then tomorrow they're gonna be. Uh, installing the issue on the south side.
Who is?
Kiefer.
Okay.
Kiefer's gonna take care of that?
Yep.
Oh, wow, that's awesome.
Quite a few emails and pictures.
Is that the last thing on the checklist then?
Yes.
Is there any on the north side of that, but the end, wasn't there?
Yeah, they fixed the north side, okay, but they said the biggest ones are on the south. Yeah, and they said there was nothing there, and so I talked to previous employees. That had worked there and they said, yeah, that was on both sides. So, yeah, we got that done. And then there is still a roll off out front. But they said it's, it's okay to put stuff in, so. Is there anything that can't go in there, Gary?
Obviously tires.
Tires, batteries.
Way good.
Yeah, way good, so. Had to go and kind of stop, help Gary out, threw an aquarium in there.
Big huge aquarium.
But no, not hopefully. And we got the, we got the office all painted up and put a desk in there for them. I have to check the bathroom. We painted and I don't know if we finished putting all the stuff back in there, but I'll check that tomorrow. Looks pretty good in there.
Yeah, that's a huge improvement. Oh my goodness, you guys did awesome.
Hmm, I think that's about all I have. Gonna start cleaning sewers here pretty soon. Getting ready for fall.
Okay, very good. Alright. Next on the agenda is the recommendation from the animal control committee that met. That was Rick, Stan, Zach was also there that day, Carolyn and I. And as you recall, that we had a request to allow quails and. Would you like to speak to that?
No, I'm trying to. I may need a weapon.
Okay, so anyway, the committee uh, did recommend that uh, quail be allowed. And that it be added to the ordinance in the regulating of animals and livestock. And just use the same restrictions as the chickens have. So it'll be chickens and quail in that part of the ordinance. But what that also led us to was the fact that with the zoning ordinance. Uh, being nearly complete, there was a lot of, or there was materials from the. Ordinants, the city ordinances that, yeah, moved to uh, the zoning. And so consequently, we have got the uh, um. American legal updated our city council, our city ordinances. These have been sent out to you electronically for your review. And um, we encourage you to do that and we have a timeline set up. Carolyn, help me remember, I believe that October third would be.
That would be the first reading of it, of that ordinance, to give you guys time to review and read through that. There really was not any changes with the, you know, taking out those that moved into the zoning. Portion of the ordinance, or some things that just did not apply at all. As far as civil defense and there was a couple of other ones and I struck those out. But uh, cleaned up some burby, like police department, we don't have police departments. All of law enforcement, cuz that's who we contracted, things like that, just to clean that up, so. There was no real big changes whatsoever, just really clean up, so.
So.
Print them both out before I realized one was seventy-three pages and the other one was a hundred and twenty-one.
So have uh, you, some of you had an opportunity to take a look at some of these or start reading them or? Or, we're gonna.
I looked at a little bit of it, yeah, it doesn't look like a whole lot of changes. From what I could tell, uh, beside, I mean, a little bit of the, the lingo and how it was. Was a little bit different, but I mean, I think even the lingo, when you clean that up, it.
Gets more sense.
Right, and you don't have to say as much.
Right, say it clearly.
Yeah.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments on that? I also wanted to mention that this last weekend in Wall was huge. Uh, we had the Shriners here, the state. Group of Shriners, as well as they did a parade on Main Street on Saturday. The South Dakota Pilots Association met out at the airport, so that brought in um, that group. There was a Little Bridges Rodeo that covered um, or had competitors from six states. And there was about ninety, they had three rodeos, Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon and Sunday, but they came in Friday. And I was very interested as they concluded their afternoon rodeo, how many were on hook and from their trailers. And heading downtown, so that brought dollars to our city. We had three football games that afternoon. At the football field, um, that was the, not Little League, but.
Black Hills Youth.
Black Hills Youth, and there was a pop-up event at Stop and Grounds that even included a food truck there. So it was amazing and the weather was incredible. And it was just um, really fun to see so many people in town for so many different reasons. And um, spending some dollars here, so that would be great if we can have more weekends like that. But that was certainly unique and very successful. Okay, that concludes my report. That brings us to items for discussion. No action will be taken. Does anyone have any thoughts uh, that they would like to discuss?
I have one. John, I forgot to mention, we will put some more theme signs up over there.
Okay, I'll look at. I wanted to say, Madam Mayor, sidewalks are nice, but that doesn't change the twenty mile an hour speed. It's a little dangerous.
Yep, we'll look for signs up, see if that helps.
Thank you.
One thing with our ordinances too, like um, front yard fences have been coming up. And I think we need to work on something for our ordinance for front fences, because there's multiple in town. Like some are even walled in, you know, so. I think you should look at maybe allowing front yard fences.
And I, I kind of agree, you know, I mean, with animals, small children, things like that. The only thing that I think that we have to kind of keep in mind is, you know, the, the sidewalks to which people are on. And the visibility for the person coming out of their property or the people that are walking or people driving down the streets. So if a vehicle is backing out of their property and they got a wood fence, a six-foot wood fence. I, they can, they can only see directly behind their vehicle, whereas if somebody's walking or.
I know.
Yeah, or somebody coming on the street, so visibility is, is pretty important. But I have had, you know, some people asking, you know, um, for like animals. You know, it's difficult to have a back, a backyard, but then to close off that backyard. Cuz you can't have anything in the front, where if you could have chain link and, you know, on the front and run it into your existing back fence. You, you now can secure an animal, children, things like that. So, you know, I mean, I, I don't have, really have an issue with it, you know, other than the safety side of things. You know, just so that for the people on the sidewalk, people on the road and the property owner. You know, I, I think there, there's a, there's a lot of different material out there now, you know, even besides chain link. That, that somebody could put up, you know, so.
The upkeep would have to be.
Yeah, that's kind of. Well, and, and. Like I thought about it, Mary, Mary's encouragement, and why, why did that go in? Well, I, I think there's a lot of things that, we have a lot of people that have six-foot privacy fences in their front yard. It'd be huge safety issues. Because you can't see, you can't see through them and, and if they were, you know, up to the sidewalk. And then I, I don't think it would really be aesthetically very pleasing, plus deliveries. Uh, UPS, those kinds of things. I, I mean, I think there was good reason uh, that ordinance uh, has been in place. The chain length though, no problem.
Yeah, I, I think it's something we need to.
Look into.
Look into it, but come up with a set of standards, you know, yeah, I, I agree, you know, there's nothing wrong with the four-foot high fence. But an eight-foot tall fence in your front yard is probably not. It's, it's not. Gonna look.
Twenty-five, keep bringing up, is I need a snow fence on the north side of my yard, so I can get out of my driveway.
So what was the original reason?
It's possible, I, I think everything I just said, sa- safety, you know, if you, if you had, if somebody. Had a fence just on the other side of the sidewalk, covering their whole yard. Uh, and somebody had a driveway next to it, people could be walking along the sidewalk. They couldn't see the car coming out, little, little kids, uh. A- aesthetically, uh, deliveries, I, I mean, uh, I, I, I always thought that uh, the city was advised. In limiting the height of uh, uh, privacy fence to six foot, it's pretty good, it's pretty high. And provides a lot of privacy, I think, going up to ten, twelve feet is probably, you know, in the city, it can really overkill.
But for backyard, like eight, ten feet wouldn't be that tall for a backyard, cuz it's not putting. Safety issues out there for people driving or going by. I got six-foot privacy fence and I can see over it. When like my hill goes down in my backyard, like gets up to here, I mean. And so don't even have to just look over and I can see over it. And that's what a privacy fence is, is for privacy.
I brought a fence issue, I'm not sure you need a privacy in your front, yeah.
Yeah, probably are different, but backyard, like. That's what backyard fence is for, for privacy.
One thing we need to start doing too is a lot of people that have those privacy fence in their backyards. Do not mow on the other side of. Their lawn, so there's some places that, you know, there's six-foot kosher weed back there. I mean, it's, it does not look good back there either. And then also, another thing that I thought of too is like the right-of-way. You know, if we start putting a bunch of fences in, and I looked up and then. This is the heavy flow streets, the right-of-way is eighty feet, so it's forty from the centerline on each side. And then us, the, all other is six.
forty from the center line on each side of this, the, all other is sixty-six feet, so. I mean, by the time you figure that in on some of those busy streets, it's, you're not gonna have a much of a front yard or fence, but, you know, and I agree that some could be worked out.
Well, it just seems like Wall's standards for streets and, and yards have all been pretty high, and so I just thought there was a history or a reason, or.
Yeah, it, it's been a place for so long, way out of my range.
Yeah, I asked quite a few people and nobody remembered.
And this, this was an issue that I remember coming up back in the nineties when I, when I worked for the public works. I, I remember people, you know, wanting to put fences, you know, in the front yards for, so it's been been an issue for, you know, thirty-seven years and I know.
I ran most houses here in nineteen eighty, had had a chain link fence around the front yard, it still has that chain link fence around the front yard here in town. It was nice, your dog didn't run off, it was.
Yeah, there is quite a few that do have one, but they've I mean, I'm guessing they were in before this was done, and I know we've allowed one. One person came and asked if they could do it, and they allowed it.
Okay, well, something to continue to think about and try to open questions, or?
Yeah, on the, on those ordinance I'm hearing you talk about, I would have to put in a simple posted rail decorative fence in front of my house. You know, it's not even really a fence, it's just decorative. Does it cover that stuff too? Are you talking just about sliding up?
It's considered a fence.
He's got a horse or something, yeah.
But it wouldn't be actually fencing anything in, that's what it is.
Yeah, well, I think like, maybe he's popping in the shoe or residents down on the corner of Land and Forest, they put something on decorative, decorative fence, it's only not even knee-high.
It's not permanent.
Just a little wire, like it's considered decorative, isn't it? Thank you for the dollar, I will put them here.
Okay, all right, any other thoughts on that? Our next city council meeting will be October third at six thirty. Uh, we do have a need for uh, executive session.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of contracts according to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two parentheses four.
All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries.